Good evening, everybody. It's March 9th. Welcome to the Town of Reinbeck's regular board meeting. Would everybody please stand for the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Now, that's the public vote. I'm going to make a...I'm looking for a motion to improve prior minutes of November 25th, 2019, December 9th, 2019, our January 2nd, 2020 reorganizational meeting, our January 2nd, 2020 regular town board meeting, our February 2nd, 2020 special town board meeting, our February 11th, 2020 regular town board meeting, and our February 24th, 2020 regular town board meeting. I have a motion.
Second.
Thank you, Ed. Chauncey, thank you. Are there any questions or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I'm going to take the meeting out of order. We have a discussion item, and our cemetery administrator is here to talk to us about a possible restriction of sales of multiple cemetery burial plots. Thanks, Suzanne.
Always something, Ed. Hi. I'm really here on behalf of the cemetery committee, so to pose the question of whether or not the town board wants to restrict...a place restriction on the number of plots that one entity can purchase. And so I just want to give you backstory on this. So about a year ago, we had a Reinbeck resident come to us who wanted to buy a hundred, a little over 100 plots, and they wanted to buy them for themselves, but also for people who benefit from this foundation that he runs. And so at the time, and since that time, we had no objection to that because in the cemetery, we have both precedent for an entity that's not a family owning burial plots, multiple burial plots, and also that many, that sort of land area, that square footage of burial plots being owned by one entity. In the old part of the cemetery, many of the family plots are quite large. One of them is actually exactly the same size as the 100-plus plots that now exists in the Grasmer section of the cemetery that this person wants to buy via their foundation. And there's actually a lot of other family plots in the old part of the cemetery that are also very big, not quite as large as this plot, but that are next to adjacent family members' family plots, making a very large plot. Levi Morton's plot is really quite large, not as big as the 100 plots, but probably around 60 or 70 plots today's plots could fit into that size. So it's not unprecedented for cemeteries to have this large area for some of one entity to purchase, and it certainly has been true in our cemetery in Reinbeck. As things have changed over the years and families have moved apart, it's become less common for families to buy that many plots or that much of a land area because cremation rates are, you know, inching toward 80 percent. So the customs have changed a bit, but nonetheless, cemeteries have a history of that, and we certainly have a history of that in our cemetery, and so we did have no objection to that. However, at the end of last year, the same person came back, because they haven't purchased any plots yet, and said, "We actually might want to buy more than that, double that amount" that are adjacent to the area that they're looking at, upwards of more than 200. And so we met last week, the cemetery committee met last week for the first time this year. We normally have our first meeting in February to do our records audit, but we had to postpone it because we have a real estate foundation. And so we had it, and there was some concern among most of the committee about allowing this because we don't have any precedent for buying that many plots or that much of a land area. There was also some concern over the number of plots that still exist in the cemetery and how much of a percentage this would be taken away from the cemetery for existing plots. And so the new software that we'll be getting will actually allow us to pinpoint exactly... one of the many things that it will do, that will allow us to know exactly how many plots are left in the cemetery, how many are open and available for sale. It will also allow us to look at the landmass that is left that's not now surveyed out to see how many we can have in the future because there's still parts of the cemetery, including in the natural burial ground, that have not been surveyed out and plotted. So Dave Queen, who is a land surveyor, you know, a civil engineer who's been on the committee for more than 40 years, actually, he's done these numbers periodically, his own estimates based on the maps, went through them after our meeting on Thursday, and came up with the following numbers. We have about 3,500 plots that are part of the survey right now that exist in the cemetery that are open and available for sale, and with the landmass that is...
Sorry, does that include the natural burial ground?
It does. It includes the natural burial ground.
3,500 plots left in the cemetery?
No. 3,500 plots left that are surveyed and gridded and plotted out to purchase.
I'm sorry, it's an emergency. Excuse me.
But the landmass that we have left would allow us to have probably more than 7,500 plots available. So we have over on top of that. So if you do the estimate based on the 58 burials a year, that puts us at about 200 years to sell out the plots that we have in the cemetery right now. So that's where we're at. That's my story for you.
Do you have a recommendation for minimizing the number of plots that could be logged?
Well, I'm not sure now. The recommendation at the time, the majority consensus at the cemetery was that we did not...we were not in favor of allowing more than the 100-plus plots. We weren't in favor of the 100-plus plots based on what I just described. But now that we see the numbers, again, this is an estimate, and we'll know better once we have the software, that we're projecting that far out, I think I would have to go back to the committee at our next meeting, and we're not having...I could call a special meeting, but we don't have another meeting until June because we're only doing six a year now, to find out what people think now that Dave gave us these stats.
And what's the not-for-profit, the goal of it, or what is the interconnection?
Yeah. So it's a Reinbeck resident who has a foundation. The foundation actually...the mission of the foundation is to serve the needs of...they work with food banks to serve food pantries, to work to serve the needs of people who are food insecurity care for their pets. So they help people, if they're food insecure, their pets are food insecure, so that's what the focus of the foundation is on. So the burial plots are for people, they're not for pets, but they're for the people who are served by the foundation. Yeah.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I had to step out. Can you just clarify for me? We have 3,500 plots left in the cemetery?
So we have 3,500 plots that are surveyed out and plotted right now that are for sale. We have more land on top of that that's in the woods, it's part of the natural burial ground, and then behind that, that if it were surveyed out, according to our civil engineer and this land surveyor who's on our committee, would allow us to have upwards of 7,500, 70... it was supposed to be 7,700 more plots, which he said estimated over time, based on, we do about, on average, about 58 burials a year we've been doing, and it really hasn't shifted oddly over the last 50 years. It would be about 200 years before we were done.
Okay. The 3,500 surveyed plots include the natural burial ground?
They do.
What is the total of that?
The plots that are surveyed there?
Yes.
I think it's around 900, a little under 900. Yeah. And, you know, the goal of the natural burial ground is that we would, you know, we'll be...we should be surveying out more. We probably should have done a larger survey.
We didn't know.
Right. But we will, we will survey out more.
So some of this land butts the natural burial ground, so that could get bigger as well?
That's our hope.
And when people buy, they could buy any of the 3,500? Any one of the 3,500?
Any one of the 30...anybody could buy any one of the 3,500.
Okay, anywhere, so...
Yes. Yeah, except in the old cemetery, we don't...we only have cremation plots available.
So is there a recommendation from the committee that we do limit the...
Well, as I said, there's no objection to the 100-plus plots, as I explained, for the precedent reasons. There was some majority concern over more than that because without the precedent, and also, but this was before we really had the stats in front of us. Dave did these stats after we had the meeting, and so I don't know, as I said, if I would need to go back to the cemetery committee to see if people have changed their mind. Dave Queen actually wrote an email to the committee, and he changed his mind based on the statistics. I mean, so...
Suzanne, when we make the sale, do we restrict the way the plots are used and marketed and make sure that they're used the way we're told they're going to be used?
They can't...there's a deed, and we...and they can't sell the plots. It has to come back to us.
So, yeah, they can't, they can't sell the plots even though the foundation owns...the thing with a burial plot is you don't own the plot, you own the right to be buried there, and you own the right to allow them to be buried there. Yeah.
Thank you.
It's 1 percent of our left, you know, of all of our possible land. It seems pretty big. Dave Queen changed his mind to...
To allowing it. Yeah, to allowing it. But again, the majority consensus was to allow the 100-plus, but to not to permit more than that, based on the precedent of the old part of the cemetery where we have ones that are that large. So I would say where we stand right now, that's what I bring to you from the cemetery committee. Again, people may change their minds when they see these stats, I didn't have this information to bring to them then, so I can't.
Oh, you changed your mind?
I...
We'll come up and talk. You have to speak.
My pleasure. I'm also a cemetery committee, and what Suzanne was talking about, you think you have the information, she thought it was important, that we actually have about 20 years left of the way we're running this cemetery right now.
Right.
Which is really significant. And had we had that information before, we'd all were concerned that we...200 plots were a lot based on what we had, we didn't know we really had that much. Dave Queen was a, in fact, a surveyor and a professional engineer, came up with these stats, he does this, and he actually is one surveying this house. He says, "Based on what his information has the best of the job now," that we have a very significant number, and he's actually changed his mind because he thought that too many would be too many. But we all kind of agreed that first we locked it down to 100 and see what we can pull from there.
I would make it a percentage of available plots, not just a hard number, because as we dwindled, the number that people...
The problem with the available plot thing, you see, with Dave's estimates now, this day's available plots, but now even when we have available plots because of the land, we don't know what is on that land, whether it rocks or whatever it gets, so some leeway of having fewer graves available.
Not really, not too much.
Well, I mean, we either know the number, we either know the stats or we don't. So if we know the stats, why wouldn't we go for a percentage of available land?
A descending percentage, right?
Yeah. Well, I mean, a percentage descends as if we have 1 percent, he can only buy up to 120 plots, and then after those plots are gone, it'll be...if we set it at a percentage instead of a number, I think we're more protected.
Well, I mean, if he buys up, buys 1 percent, then he buys another 1 percent.
We would not, we would restrict it to one person, family, or entity.
So you just change and have another lot for profit?
Just explain to me when you said that they don't buy the plots itself, they buy the right to...
The right to be buried there.
Explain how that works financially.
Financially?
It's not, you'd have to look at the deed.
Well, the deed, yeah, the deed, it's explained, I think it's essentially explained that way, the deed. So they're not, they're not buying the land, and I think that that's, that's the way that all cemeteries operate. So in terms of the money, they purchased the plot, they purchased the plot.
Right.
They're purchasing the rights to be buried on that plot, and that's all that they have.
So then when there's a burial, do they pay the town any more money?
Yes. So at interim, the interim is there's an extra fee that can be prepaid.
Oh, okay. But in the meantime, we have, we would have the money for the extra plots that we could use.
It's true. And I have to say that when you go and set...
Our finances for the cemetery are dwindling. We can't, we do pre-sell plots, but then we have to take care of this in perpetuity. We just spent a lot of money on the wall, so, yes, somebody buys a plot for $2,000 or $1,300, but then it's incumbent on the town to take care of it forever.
Okay. Well, we got to take care of it.
Take care of it either. You're taking care of the whole cemetery.
Yes. It's a not a money-making issue. Don't look at it as money-making. Look at it as something we have to do under state law, and it's basically taking care of a historic aspect of our town.
How much revenue do we have? How much money do we get from 100 plots?
Well, the plots are $1,250, and so we...
I thought they were 13.
I think they're $1,250. And there's, I believe, it's 113 plots, and there might have been an additional eight that were tacked on there, but let's say 113. So if you can do math on that.
$1,250. $125.
And it would be over a long period of time when they think they fill it. They don't have 100.
Right, I realized that.
The other thing...
But they would pay right away.
Yeah. And they would pay for each burial.
But it stays, the money stays in the cemetery now, and it doesn't go...
I understand, but the cemetery could use the money, it seems like.
We certainly could use the money. Yeah.
Can we limit the sale?
I don't know. Have to look into it. The new one, I mean.
Well, the first question is, do we want to?
I would say yes.
I'm assuming if it's for a nondiscriminatory reason, we probably can. We have to justify it, but I have to look into it. Is there anything in the not-for-profit cemetery laws, similar type of...
I actually didn't check on that, so you'd probably look at that. I know this came up at the meeting, but I didn't look.
It seems to me that you could do what a lot of real estate companies do, which is say this part of the cemetery is not for sale yet, or not for whatever.
Well, it's, it's true because it's not surveyed.
No, no, no. Part of the surveyed part is not for sale as well.
Well, we had been doing this...
Keep everybody concentrated.
It's funny, we had been doing that. We had been doing that, but this is actually in that section because we've been putting mausoleums in that area, the Jewish Center, they've been purchasing plots in that area now, and this is the area that they want to buy. So we're, this, this is the area that has been closed since the 1980s and now is green open. Because the other two sections, they're not filled yet, but they're, you know, they're looking more filled up. There's three sections in Grasmer. This is section three.
I think five in that area are also...
So hold on. So what, your recommendation is to allow this, and we should look at the law?
I think that you need to, what we would like is to see if there's any, if there's any...I think that you, our recommendation based on the last meeting was that it should be limited. However, I'm coming back to what Dave said in his email post that, that he doesn't, he doesn't think it should be limited anymore. I would need to bring it back to a vote again.
So if somebody wanted to buy 500 plots, Dave would be fine with it?
I'm not saying that, not to limit, not, he wasn't opposed in this instance to the 200.
Is he bought at 200 or we don't know?
I have to count them again. I think it was around 225 or something.
Or is this the last buy, or this is all that he's interested in?
I mean, it's a good question. I think so because it goes up to a certain point, and again, he may not end up buying this many, but this has never come up before. I do think it needs to be addressed by the town boards for us to decide, and it probably will never come up again. It's highly unusual circumstance, I think.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Warren, will you look into this for us?
Yeah.
Thanks. Anything else? Warren will do us an introduction. Put this on the agenda for the next meeting to attorney's findings on this. Thanks very much, guys. Warren, I think that's all we need for...
Excellent. Good luck.
I'll make a motion for resolution 2020-083 for our budget transfers and amendments. May I have a second? Thanks, Alan. Is there any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for resolution 2020-084 for our accounts payable abstract, 42 checks totaling $931,000, and $931.56 and 10 cents. Second, anyone?
Second.
Josh, thanks. Just for the public and you guys, this is so much because we're paying out all of our fire department contracts and our town water hydrants to the village, and this is all the big things that are due after we've collected our taxes, so fire departments, fire protection district, and water.
Libraries, too.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'm looking for a motion for resolution 2020-085, repainting our senior van.
So moved.
Thank you, Chauncey. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Alan. This is a bid from the highway department to receive, to get our senior van heated from Classic Auto Body for $2,250, which, thank you for taking this on, Bob. I just want to make sure we get our correct town logo on there.
Yes.
As a decal with Town of Reinbeck senior van. Yeah. Okay. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thanks, Bob. I'm looking for a motion for resolution 2020-086 for the upgrade of our transfer station hire. Thank you. What's your name? Ed.
Second. I'm Chauncey.
I think Alan seconded it before, and I remembered his name quicker, so... Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I need a motion for resolution 2020-087 for our summer recreation, 2020 summer recreation brochure. Alan?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chauncey. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I would like a motion for resolution 2020-088 for our transfer station fees.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Ed. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alan. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Is the yearly fee like a license fee, if you're going to take anything, you pay an annual fee?
Put it on your window, you get a sticker, you put it on your window.
Oh, and it, yeah, it just allows you to...
And then you have to pay per bag.
I should come in.
For the little, medium, large, and they're going to take all of our recyclables and all of our e-waste, and Ed has figured this out so that we've expanded our hours. We've been fighting this because our waste hauler who was giving us service wanted to cut our weekday service, and we said no, so we can actually expand the service now. We're entering into a contract based on monthly tipping fees, so we could have it open even longer if we want. So Ed, thank you, thank you for all your hard work on this and figuring it out. You did a great job.
Well done, Ed.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution, I will move resolution 2020-089, a policy on naming town roads. May I have a second?
Second.
Chauncey, thanks. This, occasionally, several times a year, I get requests from the county E-911 and the Department for Real Estate and Property Taxes to approve private road names, and we've been getting pretty, you know, undignified names. This resolution, what, named after the developers or the developers' pets or the developers' hobbies? This resolution is asking that the town, to retain the dignity of our town, that all requests go to our historian, our deputy historian, and our historic preservation committee for suggestions, and then the town board approve names befitting our town to sort of honor our history and our physical...
Seems like they could make a list ahead of time.
Well, for instance, we had one name, it doesn't work like that, and there's no mechanism for that. The people go to the ORPS, and ORPS sends me a letter, and I put it on our agenda. Often, they don't even give me contact numbers for the people. So when we get I Love Fly Fishing Lane, we don't, we will send it to our historian, and in the past, she said things like, "There used to be a Dutch farm there in the late 1600s owned by this family. Why don't we consider that?" Or, "There was a mill there." So we can have lanes of, names that are more reflective of our history and physical presence and still, you know, not have it, it's not town board controlled, it would be based on the history.
This means there won't be a pickleball lane, for example?
I don't think so, unless it's leading up to the pickleball, of course.
Okay.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2020-090, oh, this is where we want to thank Ed. We thanked him again, yeah, awarding the bid for a qualified waste hauler for removal and disposal of certain waste items from the town transfer station and the expanded hours. May I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Thanks, Ed. May I have a second?
Okay.
Thanks, Alan. Any discussion?
I just have a stupid question. What's co-mingle? Is it co-mingle or co...
Means put together.
So that's random?
Well, no, that's like two things.
So that's not straight up...
You can put cardboard and paper together.
That might be changed in the future because things are changing in the disposal area.
Yeah, yeah, I just didn't know what it was.
Single stream is over, and that'll all have to be done down there by sign.
It's tri-stream.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Where else is there?
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Is there any public comment on any non-agenda items, any other business before the town board? Does anybody have any new business?
I'm looking.
Bob's got some new business.
Yeah, I know.
Can you come up?
Yes, okay.
Hi, I'm Bob Lyon, Town Reinbeck Highway Superintendent. I've wanted to start doing bi-monthly reports on what the highway department's been doing.
Love that. Thank you.
Okay, so here goes. I would like to start the highway setback. Okay, I had reports on the highway department, what we have been doing, project dates, and just the overall status of our department. January and December, we saw very little snowfall for the Town of Reinbeck. We had some snow on January 18th, which amounted to four to five inches. February, we had maybe three inches on the 8th and 13th. So it's been a very easy winter so far, which is good. Saves on the equipment and salt, sand supply. By the way, our salt shed is full, and I'm trying to cut back on the salt usage as much as we can. So for the months of January and February, we have been catching up on some tree work, which is always an ongoing process. We have a lot of dead elm trees, and now the ash trees have gotten hit with the ash boring beetle. If you see a dangerous tree that may fall in the roadway, please let us know. We are also cutting brush in areas where needed for site distances. By the way, we are getting a new wood chipper which will replace our old 1993 chipper. We have been trying to keep up with the potholes also. If you see a pothole on our roads, please let us know. Our mechanic is thoroughly going over our equipment, make sure it's ready for the good weather maintenance of our roadways, culverts, and bridges. We will begin sweeping operations shortly, which I expect should be light this year because of the easy winter. We also will be around to fix any plow damage to properties. Signs will be straightened, some replaced as needed. Our upcoming projects are Pell's Road to North End, which will be chip sealed as soon as the weather allows, and signed to schedule for early April or May. We were at the mercy of the weather doing that. It was paved with a dense binder asphalt last year, which makes a very good road base, and it must be sealed to prevent water from working into it. Enterprise Road is on our list for repaving this year also, as is the extension of Primrose Hill on the east side of Route 9G. Mount Rutson Road will also be paved this year, but most of our paving will take place at the school, so it's not to interfere with the school buses. All this paving will be done in-house with either shared services, pavement or roller, or our own pavement and roller. We get a lot of help from the other towns, which I would like to thank, Red Hook, My Island, and Clinton, and we helped them back. It's good for everyone, including the taxpayers. Duchess County Purchase were our towns, the pavement and roller, which we share between us. They also purchased us a mini excavator, aerial bucket truck. I just want to say thank you to them, very much appreciate it, and it's working out well. We also have drainage projects to take care of. The dock down in Rhine Cliff is one of them, cutting shoulders in places where the water runoff is not happening as it should. This is just some of the things that we have planned along our regular mowing, along the roadways. We also take care of the old cemetery at the Wade Road and Route 9 location along with the highway garage and Memorial in Rhine Cliff. So you can see we stay pretty busy with a crew of seven men, and I really do love my job serving the residents of this town that we all love. I am only as good as the crew behind me, and I have an excellent crew. My office manager, Jessica, is unbelievable. She keeps everything working. She will soon have a new website up and running for the highway department, which will be updated with projects and road conditions or detours and closing during storms. So in closing, I just, this is just an update to what we have been doing and plan on doing. As always, if you have a concern or something on our roadways, please let me know it. Area code 845-876-6263, or an emergency at 845-224-8316. Thank you.
Excellent, Bob. Thank you. I would ask two things. One, put yourself on the agenda the next time, just call the clerk because I'd love to notice the public, and two, email that to the clerk and clerks and myself, and we'll get it on our Facebook page and on our website.
Okay.
Thank you for the update. It's great. Anybody else? How about a motion for adjournment? Thank you. Good night, everybody. See you in two weeks.